Let's rock and roll. I'm gonna call the reconvening of our special finance committee meeting and hearing on the Cook County Health Systems budget. We are going to, I'm gonna ask the secretary to call the role.
And I will just call on the members who are present since we do not need a quorum.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Director Lowry, who is remote?
Present.
Director Basut Bernet. Chair Ryder.
Here.
And Board Chair Garza.
Present.
Director Sorel's online, too.
Thank you.
All right. Since we don't need a quorum, we don't have to worry about voting on remote participation. And we are going to, first, let's, why don't we, are we okay to do the public comment first like we did last time?
Sure.
We'll, we'll do public comments. Do we have any, do we have any testimony that was presented in written form?
We received written testimony from Reverend Tony Terry Weston, which you have copies in front of you, and it will be uploaded to the website and included in meeting minutes.
All right. Great. And then we have registered speakers?
We do. We have six of them.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and start receiving their oral testimony?
The first speaker is Sarah Esparza, who is not present. The next speaker is Kristi Garceau.
Yep. We can maybe get, can we get, get that door in soon?
All right. Hi, I'm Kristi Garceau. I'm with the Center of Concern in Displanes. We're a nonprofit organization, and I serve as the Director of Advancement and Outreach. We are nonprofit, like I said, social service organization. We started in 1978, primarily referring older adults to resources in the community. We were founded after a community assessment determined that older adults didn't know how to access the resources they needed to be able to thrive in their communities. Since then, we've expanded to offer housing assistance, homelessness prevention, community services for folks with low income, as well as expansive older adult services to keep people able to safely age in place in their homes. So every year, we serve about 2,000 clients. Like I said, mention some of our services include case management, transitional and rapid rehousing, housing counseling, financial and employment counseling, companionship programs, in-home chore housekeeping, support groups, educational events, and resources, resource referrals. So our relationship to Cook County Department of Public Health actually started in 2020. It began with the grant-funded program, the COVID-19 Community Supports. It had a much longer title at the time, something about contact tracing, but it reconfigured into Community Supports. And then through that, we were able to continue our partnership through grant funding with the Building Healthy Communities project. And between both of those, we were able to successfully distribute more than 4,000 care packages to our clients and community members. We provided hundreds of vaccine appointments and test access to both our clients and vulnerable community members. And we were able to continuously disseminate relevant COVID-related information, and then that translated into future other health-related information. Beyond the grant-funded projects, we were able to strengthen our relationship with Cook County Department of Public Health and maintain other relationships with fellow community-based organizations. So since then, we've continued staying in touch by being informed of critical and timely health advisories, being able to disseminate that information to our clients and communities. We have continued to engage with the Regional Learning and Action Network meetings that they host, as well as data ambassador trainings and the We Plan meetings. We have continued to connect with fellow community-based organizations, like I stated, through different partnerships, resource sharing, client referrals. And we've also utilized the Cook County Health Atlas to guide our planning and decision-making within our agency. So I just wanted to say that the Center of Concern is greatly appreciative of the Cook County Department of Public Health and our ongoing partnership, and it allows us to best serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Perry.
Happy Wednesday to everyone.
Happy Wednesday.
Happy Wednesday. My name is Debbie Perry. I am the Senior Director of Advocacy and Crisis Intervention Services for the YWCA Metropolitan Chicago. I started as a volunteer, became an advocate, moved from that position to a coordinator, then to a manager, to then director, and then now am Senior Director with Advocacy and Crisis Intervention Services. A little background about the YWCA. It was started in 1876, so we've been around for a while. We are the largest provider of sexual assault services, which was a great feed-in to community violence services. We presently have 13 MLUs with different hospitals in Cook County and in DuPage County. Of those 13, 10 of them serve either the South Side of Chicago or South Cook County. How the anti-crime grant came to us was a, well, I thought it was a fluke, but you never know. It started out with an AG application. And when we put it in, I wasn't quite sure if we'd get it, but much to my surprise, we did get it, which started our course on community violence. Our second grant that we would get would be through Cook County Behavior Health Initiative. Our third one was Stronger Together. I am very proud of the advocates that serve on each of those grants because of their background in sexual assault. They understand the impact of violent crimes when working with survivors. We have, in the South Suburbs, for 40 years, worked with victims of violent crimes. Communities that we are presently serving are the highest crime rates in South Cook County. We have worked with law enforcement agencies for 30-plus years, some of it good, some of it not so good. We have worked with the Cook County State's Attorney's Office and have a outstanding relationship with them, as well as victim witness. We can explain court procedures when we're working with those individuals who are victims of violent crime. For instance, if their case is lucky enough to go into the criminal justice system, here's what they're gonna hear from the system.
Excuse me, you have 30 seconds remaining.
Oh, in that case, thank you for the money. Let me explain the impact of how the grant has helped us. It has gave community trust, so they know they can come to us. They have trust working with law enforcement. Law enforcement trusts us at this point to know that we're gonna give the best service to crime victims. And we have our first two MLUs with law enforcement agencies, the two highest crime-rate communities in the South Suburbs. This money is helping those victims in court, at the agencies, and in the communities with information and referral service.
The next speaker is Sarah Fletcher. Good afternoon, Chair Ryder and members of the Cook County Finance Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak today. I'm Sarah Fletcher, and I am the Chief Clinical Officer at Trilogy, which is a community mental health and substance use treatment provider serving Cook County. At Trilogy, our mission is to enable people in mental health recovery to build meaningful and independent lives through comprehensive and integrated care. For over 50 years, we've worked specifically with clients living with serious mental illness, complex health and co-occurring substance use disorders, homelessness, and poverty. We have extensive experience helping people face multiple barriers when they are moving towards recovery. Last year, Trilogy received a million-dollar grant for over a 27-month period from the Cook County Health Office of Behavioral Health for the expansion of our outpatient youth mental health services across Chicago. The investment has directly contributed to our ability to respond decisively to increasing demand for mental health services. Funding from Cook County Health has enabled us to scale up our clinical workforce at a really critical time. It has increased access to care, playing a key role in the opening of our new location on Chicago's northwest side in May, as well as our 24,000-square-foot Mental Wellness Center in the South Side community of Chatham, which we are having our grand opening for next month. We are incredibly grateful for the generous support of Cook County Health and the commitment to investing in mental health and substance use services and supports for the youth in our community. I would like to highlight a few important milestones that this investment has helped us be able to achieve. We were able to hire a new child and adolescent psychiatric provider. We also hired a registered nurse to support family and family, support child and family services. We brought on a new team of therapists and providers to serve children, family, and youth, specifically on the South Side of Chicago. And we were able to build new partnerships on the South Side and Northwest Side of the city, allowing us to partner across social service providers. And based on these achievements, we've been able to serve 139 new youth clients between our South Side and Northwest Side locations in less than one year. We're proud of the progress we've been able to make to expand mental health access to young people during this time, and look forward to the continuum of this work that will allow us to serve even more people. Thank you again for the opportunity to share our progress and for the commitment Cook County Health, as shared, has shown, to investing in a strong, coordinated, and collaborative behavioral health system across the county. Thanks.
The next speaker is Dahlia Morales.
Good afternoon, Cook County Health Board of Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Dahlia Galvan Morales, and I'm the Associate Director of Strategy and Government Relations at Erie Family Health Centers. I'm here today to express Erie's strong support for the County Care Health Plan. Erie Family Health Centers is a federally qualified health center with 13 locations across the Chicagoland area. We provide primary dental and mental health services for over 95,000 patients a year, including more than 27,000 county care members and over 14,000 uninsured Cook County residents. Since 2014, we've been proud to partner with County Care through MHN ACO. This isn't just a, isn't just a care model, it's also an economic engine, creating hundreds of jobs in communities hit hardest by economic and health challenges. Together, we're delivering integrated, community-based, whole-person care and achieving some of the best outcomes in the industry. We couldn't do this work without the leadership and support of the Cook County Health Board. Your leadership makes this work possible. Now more than ever, we need to protect access to quality health care for our community and ensure our safety net is fully funded. Cuts to Medicaid put thousands of lives at risk, especially in our most vulnerable communities. Our partnership with County Care is critical to keep, to keeping care within reach for those who need it the most. Erie and County Care have worked together to help Medicaid members stay together, reminding them when they need to renew their coverage and supporting them to complete and submit their forms. Because of this effort, Erie has been able to retain 97% of eligible members. And MHN ACO is among the top performers in Illinois for redetermination success. Take, for example, one of our patients who is a senior and has been diagnosed with diabetes and hypertension. He was on Erie's sliding fee scale for a long time due to not being eligible for coverage. When he became eligible for Medicaid, he signed up for County Care, and with the help of Erie's Social Drivers of Health Team, he was able to learn how to set up rides for his medical appointments, as well as access all of his other benefits through County Care. When he was due for redetermination, he needed to come to Erie for support to submit his paperwork so he didn't lose coverage. He has reported that he is very grateful for the many services offered by County Care and Erie's help navigating his benefits and coverage. In closing, thank you, Cook County Health Board of Directors, for your continued investment in the County Care Health Plan and our safety net community. Together, we're building a healthier, stronger Cook County.
Thank you.
We do not have any other registered speakers.
All right. Well, thank you to all of our folks who provided comments.
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. There was one more.
One more.
Dr. Mohamed Paracha, I'm so sorry.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Yeah, my name is Mohamed Paracha. I'm a, I'm the CEO of AHS Family Health Center. We are a federally qualified health center with four health center sites located on the North Side of Chicago and in the northern suburbs of Cook County. I'm here today to offer my testimony in support of the budget for the Cook County Health and the County Care Health Plan, which continues to be a well-recognized health plan among patients and providers delivering healthcare services in the Cook County. My health center employs 110 staff, most of them are bilingual. Our staff speak over 40 different languages to ensure that we fulfill our mission of providing culturally competent and linguistically appropriate services to multilingual patients residing in our service area. Last year, we served approximately 16,000 unduplicated patients. More than 90% of a patient, of our patients reside in, in the county of Cook. 2,700 of our patients are County Care members. We joined County Care back in 2013, and we joined the Medical Home Network that provides care coordination services to County Care patients in 2021. Through this valuable partnership between County Care, Medical Home Network, and FQAC, we were able to prevent duplication and improved healthcare outcomes of our patients. In addition, this partnership was able to control cost of care for the highest patient in Cook County. With extensive provider network and accessibility, along with a strong focus on patients' health and well-being, County Care remains a popular and well-regarded insurance option for patients and providers. Over 30% of our patients are uninsured. For the next several months, our highest priority is that our uninsured patient does not grow further by, this, this we will do by educating patients to be proactive in, in the Medicaid redetermination process. In times when we are trying to minimize the impact of federal Medicaid cuts among our members, I like to express my strong support for County Care so several hundred thousand of Cook County residents continue to access quality healthcare services. Thank you for giving me and my colleagues this opportunity to speak on behalf of our patients. We strongly support Cook County Health and County Care. Again, thank you for the support we have received from Cook County Board of Commissioners over the years. This concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Now that definitely concludes. I apologize.
All right. So we're now gonna hear from Scott Spencer, our Associate CFO, and Joseph Francois, our Budget Director, to provide us a, an overview of the budget presentation.
Good afternoon, Directors. All right, so. All right, so here to, Associate CFO Scott Spencer, here's with, with Joe Francois to present the 2026 budget. Next slide, please. So want to just highlight our, handful of our accomplishments during 2025. Not gonna read through all of these, but the highlighted items here are more budget-related, such as the accomplishment of converting close to 200 agency positions to fill vacancies, the new Bronzeville House Center opening, and adding new primary care slot utilization metrics to value-based care measures, in addition to increasing the number of County Care members filling their prescriptions with CCH pharmacies. The next slide, our 2026 key initiatives, so really, you know, flowing from the achievements of 2025, and similarly highlighting here the items that are more directly budget-related, and just to call out a few, so continuing to make progress in reducing the vacancy rate and reducing agency utilization and entering into additional value-based contracts to drive higher quality outcomes and to yield positive financial impact. Next slide. So on this slide, you can see our FTE trend over the, the last 10 years, and then calling out specifically the increase from 2025 to 2026 of approximately 110 FTEs, which are mostly ARPA-related. Next slide. So this slide shows our volume trends over the last several years. As you can see, some areas have seen steady growth, while others have remained pretty flat or have declined. Next slide. So touching, touching again on the, the federal and state funding cuts that we're facing, the health benefits for immigrant adults on the far-left, left side, so roughly $111 million, which is included in the FY26 budget. The, in the middle, the DISH cuts that we are waiting, or eagerly awaiting congressional action coming this fall, as to whether those cuts will be delayed, but those DISH cuts are not included in the FY26 budget. And then the impact from Medicaid work requirements and Medicaid redetermination shifting from 12 months, which it is currently, to six months. So the compounding effects of all of those cuts expected do have the impact on the health system of more uninsured patients, higher demand for care, and higher charity care, and putting, generally speaking, pressure on services that are provided and access to care in general. Next slide. So here you can see that we've enjoyed favorable surpluses the last few years, where revenues have exceeded expenses, but that's projected to change in the out years as salaries increase, and we see supply cost inflation and pending additional Medicaid cuts come into effect. Next slide. So as we get into the, the proposed FY26 budget for the health plan and for the healthcare services side, we establish what our assumptions are, and we'll go through those now, but we also need to determine what our volumes are, because our, we need to determine what our revenue is going to be, so we know what costs we can support as a health system. So as we run through the assumptions here, starting with our FY25 current run rate, and we add and subtract as, as we need to, so for example, adding the, the carryover from the, the expense reduction plan that was implemented in FY25 to close the budget gap. So a lot of that will carry over into the FY26 budget. We also have additional GI volumes and observation days in the Crisis Stabilization Center, as well as charge master increases, increases from Medicare and Medicaid, increases in the capitation rate, increases from salary, and then a reduced membership on the, on the health plan have all been baked into the budget. So as we look at our volume assumption slide here, a couple things to point out. By and large, we expect volumes to be relatively flat, however, pointing out that surgical cases, we expect to, to increase due to added GI volumes that I mentioned. ER visits are expected to be lower than the FY25 budget, as we won't have the volumes associated with new arrivals. However, we're budgeting FY26 flat to FY25, as we might see some increase in ER visits as patients that have lost coverage might seek care through the ER. And then finally, the average daily, such as at Stroger, just pointing out that we do expect to see a decrease there, but that's driven primarily by a decrease in length of stay. So on the next slide, you'll see the various revenue streams totaling $5.144 billion, starting with our net patient service revenue of $581 million, which is a $264 million decrease from prior-year budget, due to the Medicaid impacts that we've already talked about, including redetermination, elimination of HPIA, in general, the payer mix shifting from Medicaid to uncompensated care. Governmental support, including DISH, VIPA, GME, and directed payments, overall increasing due to directed payments being underbudgeted in FY25. But again, pointing out that we're not budgeting any of the DISH cuts that we're eagerly awaiting to, to hear more about in the coming months. On the health plan side, you'll see a $168 million increase compared to prior-year budget, which is driven by rate increases despite the membership decreasing. The tax allocation increasing by $10 million, as the county has agreed to increase that tax allocation to cover the ARPA positions that are shifting to the health system, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the coming slides. And then the other line, which is seeing a decrease of $9 million, which is associated mostly to the retail pharmacy revenue stream, which again, we expect to be impacted by the federal and state policy changes as well. So the next slide, the expenses, again, $5.144 billion. So, the next slide, the expenses, again, $5.144 billion, as we, as always, are submitting a balanced budget. You'll see the distribution of those dollars between the various offices and the variance column, where you'll see the cost coming out of the health system, again, as we work to, or work towards a balanced budget. And then on the health plan services line, you'll see $210 million increase in expense, which is associated with the health claims. On the far-right-hand side, you'll see the distribution of the 110 FTEs that we're adding to the health system, which are associated with the ARPA positions moving over. Next slide. So, just at a glance here, you'll see that the total expense budget is decreasing by $2 million, so $5.146 billion to $5.144, but just highlighting that we, the green slices here, the physician freeze, the contract labor, the medical supplies, those are expenses that are coming out of the health system, again, in order to work towards achieving a balanced budget. The medical claims, the red slice in the middle, is the expense that I mentioned on the previous slide. So, all in all, a decrease of $2 million. Next slide, please. With that, turn it over to Joe to go through the offices.
Thanks, Scott, and this is Joe Francois, Budget Director at CCH, and we're running through each of the offices, variances, followed by special purpose funds, and grants. So, to begin with Stroger Hospital, there is a reduction of $129 million as compared to the FY '25 budget, with an increase of 36 positions, which those are primarily attributed to ARPA positions, with some reductions of positions from the expense reduction plan. In each of the offices, you'll notice a general decrease, that's again, from the 10% reduction plan, which was established mid-year in FY '25 and is rolling over to FY '26. In Stroger, there is a targeted focus on reducing agency utilization, particularly around nursing, pharmacy, environmental services, telecommunications, and laboratory services. Some things that are, adding some expense are continued service line investments centered around OB-GYN, cardiology, neurology, oncology, and the cancer center. Finally, this budget also includes a replacement of MRI equipment, renovation of sterile processing room, interventional radiology, a new interventional radiology machine and room, as well as construction related to the parking garage. Next slide, please. Over at Providence Hospital, there is a reduction of $20 million as compared to FY '25, with nine reduction of FTEs, again, related to the reduction plan, which is carried over from '26, as well in Providence. There's also some volumes and expense increases related to the ramp-up of the Crisis Triage and Stabilization Center, as well as expansion of expenses and volumes centered around OB-GYN, urology, GI, oral, max, facial, and general surgery services at Providence. Additionally, we're planning for a new neurology and stroke program that includes a new MRI facility. There's also additional facility infrastructure upgrades and investment, as the campus is generally getting a little older and needs refreshment of some of the facilities and infrastructure itself. Next slide, please. On the outpatient side, for our ambulatory network, as well as core, is a decrease of $37 million. However, there's an increase of 13 positions, which are again, related to ARPA positions moving over from a special purpose fund over to the corporate fund. So, again, there's a 10% reduction plan in place here, particularly focused on agency utilization over at ambulatory. This also includes the demobilization of the new arrivals intake center at Belmont-Cragin, and also includes additional expenses for maintenance of facility contracts to repair and upgrade different clinics. In FY '25, there was a new oral health clinic that opened up at North Riverside, and in FY '26, we are adding additional oral health services at select ACHN locations, which is planned at Belmont-Cragin and Blue Island. The budget also includes revenue and additional volume increases centered around our New Bronzeville and 31st Street Clinic, which opened in this fiscal year. Next slide, please. For the correctional side of healthings, Cirmac is looking at a reduction of $15 million, which is primarily a reduction around agency, similar to the other offices, and a reduction of five FTEs. JTDC is pretty much flat and has an increase of two FTEs that are related to ARPA. Generally, Cirmac expense increases are related to the phasing of telehealth services, which allows the correctional health to continue, to maximize its technology, to provide efficient, effective, and safe services for detainees. Next slide, please. And over at the public health side of things, there's a $4 million increase, as well as a 41 position increase, which are related to ARPA. So, there's a 10% reduction plan in place, however, you can see that the positions outweigh the reductions and has a net increase of $4 million. So, some of these positions are included from ARPA, as well as grants, and are centered around behavioral health, food is medicine, emergency preparedness, healthy communities, and lead abatement programs. Further, the budget also includes initiatives to advertise services to the public, as well as the new community immunization program with partners, which partners with our ambulance network. Next slide, please. For health administration, there is a decrease of $11 million as compared to the FY '25 budget, with an increase of 35 FTEs. Those are again, related to the expense reduction plan, where we froze generally non-union positions and moved them into the Position Control Committee, which gives our senior leaders a pool of positions to generally dish out for different strategic initiatives, or to restore the funding if our, as senior management monitors the fiscal situation related to the federal and state cuts. Even with these reductions, we continue to invest in our revenue cycle to maximize our revenue through denial of reductions, increasing claim submissions, as well as investing in technology to improve our billing and medical record systems. Finally, this also includes some additional expense related to the life sciences department to support our research operations, which is previously managed by Hectone and is being moved in-house over to CCH. Next slide, please. And on the health plan side, which is County Care, there is the increase of $210 million, which was previously referenced, primarily due to rate increases. There's also a three FTE reduction in health plan services related to their 10% reductions. Overall, the projected membership is set to decrease to about 362,000, which I'll be getting to in just a second. Next slide, please. On the membership side of things, County Care is estimating that there's going to be around 377,000 members by the end of December, and decreases to just under 349,000 by the end of FY '26, for an average of 362,000 over the course of the year. Next slide. And this slide here will review the County Care's financial summary. It will show the projected memberships by each of the health plans, which are listed in the bottom-left corner for the different acronyms. However, you can see the largest, the largest one is the FHP, which has 205,000, and below this, you can see the revenue per plan, as well as the expenses per plan, and then at the bottom, the net income, or how much money we are making or losing per plan, which nets out to about $1 million profit forecasted for FY '26. Over at the bottom is the contribution, which is essentially the County Care members using facilities over at CCH, and which equates to $103 million to the system in revenue. Next slide, please. And finally, we'll be just going over quickly the grants and ARPA positions, which total $69.2 million. For the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA, these funds sunset in FY '26, so all the FTEs were moved over against the corporate, and there is $26.4 million, which are primarily contracted services and grant disbursements for different ARPA programs. Finally, there's the Cook County Health and Department of Public Health grant side, which is $42.8 million. This is not included in the $5.144 million budget. These are additional funds on top of those to carry out different services around Cook County related to behavioral health, opioid and substance abuse, food is medicine, emergency preparedness, trauma and informed treatment, healthy children and families, and has approximately 210.7 FTEs over that $42.8 million, as well as other expenses. Next slide, please. And finally, since ARPA is being sunsetted over in FY '26, this is just a slide reviewing our current year-to-date expenses and the budgets for the year. And that's all we have for you. The last slide is just different acronyms in the presentation.
Well, thank you for the presentation, as this is a public hearing that we've now, I think, done this three times, and we appreciate all of our members, the public who've come up. Thank you, gentlemen, for providing the report. Our next regular, the scheduled Finance Committee meeting is, is this Friday?
Friday at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, and I'm sure we'll be hearing the report, the overview again.
We will.
Okay, great.
And the board is here.
All right, great. Well, with that, I am now fully adjourning the Special Committee of the Finance Committee in public hearing.